To the December 4th Town Board Meeting. And I'm going to call a meeting order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican public, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight our invocation will be given by Pastor Jonathan Sheridan from the Holly Springs Kirk of Kildare. I think I know you from there, right? Welcome back Pastor.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council. It's always a pleasure to be back to offer the invocation. I'm Jonathan Sheridan with the Kirk of Holly Springs, associated with the Kirk of Kildare in Cary, North Carolina. And I bring you greetings from the Kirk of Holly Springs. All peace, love, and joy in this holiday season and to everyone here tonight. Will you please join me in prayer? We pray, oh God, for blessings upon this gathering tonight. In this season, oh God, which sometimes feels hectic and chaotic and rushed, we pray, Lord, that you would slow us down and share with us the calmness and the brightness of your Son, whose birth we celebrate soon. Be with our town government. Oh God, bless them with wisdom and discernment. Indeed, oh God, bless all of our levels of government, from our town here through our state, to our country, and indeed across the world. That leaders would lead with a sense of wisdom, compassion, and mercy. Bless us all, oh God, as we join together this day and forevermore. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. I remember for is the adjustment approval of the December 4th meeting agenda. Mayor pro tem. There we go.
Motion to adopt the December 4th, 2018 meeting agenda with the following changes. Remove item 9B Voorhees subdivision.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passed unanimously, thank you. Number five, public comment period. I think we only have one person signed up and I think it's Benjamin, is it Braisley? Is it Bearly, Braisley? Am I close? There you are, Scout, yeah, please come forward. Normally we don't speak after this, but I think he has a question. I hear a rumor. Want to go to the podium right over there? And smile because you're on TV. And bring the, bring the mic down a little bit. Attaboy. So thank you for coming Benjamin, what you got to say?
You're welcome. Hello, my name is Ben Ballsley and I am an AOL on PAC 66. As a fifth grader, a student at a brand new school, Buckhorn Creek Elementary. Last year I attended Holly Grove Elementary School and there were 34 kids in my class. My question for you tonight is what is our town going to do to deal with the rapid growth and population? And if you have a plan to do it? If so, um, if you do, if so what?
Thank you for that. And I will, let me try to answer that one. Growth is pretty much inevitable, so we're working on that. As far as schools are concerned, we're going to have more of them. And right now I think we have five elementaries going strong and we're going to try to get a high school, another one. So we're working on that. So I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your concern and we'll do our best to handle it, okay?
Thank you.
But thank you for coming. Appreciate it. You get a merit badge. Again, I am six A's. We have three recognitions tonight and that's why I'm sure most of you are here and that's good. Holly Springs Park and Rec All-Star Soccer Team recognition and that would be Christopher Champion. And Christopher, I'm going to join you in two seconds, but please go.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, thank you Council. My name is Chris Champion. I am the Athletic Programs Director for the Parks and Recreation Department. I am here tonight on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department to recognize a few of our All-Star Soccer Teams for their accomplishment in the recent SWAC Soccer tournaments. After each sports season, our, our department selects All-Star Teams. Those teams are then sent across the state to compete in tournaments against other Parks and Recreation All-Star Teams. This year, we sent four teams to state SWAC championship tournaments and three of those four brought home state championships. So that's really good job, let's give them a round of applause. And actually, to give a little credit to the other team, that was the 10 U boys. They came in third place in a pretty large bracket, so they held their own as well. So we're definitely proud of all of our soccer teams. So we'll bring up each team individually, let their coaches recognize them. So first up, we have the 10 U girls and Coach Randall Barbie. Alright, so these girls really did a lot of great things at the tournament. They fought hard and I couldn't be more proud of them. So we'll just go ahead and start with the recognition. Morgan Barbie. Okay. Addison. Mia. Isabel. Mackenzie. Maddie. Olivia. Helena. Kendall. Ariana. Lola. And Piper. Thank you girls. And next up, we have the 12 U girls team and Coach Joe Drevene.
You want to read names? You don't read the names? Yeah, you get to read the names.
Oh, sorry. Do I just read the names? Oh yeah. Hi. Yeah, new reader. Good evening, thank you so much for being here, very proud of the girls. First, I want to start out with Ava Harvey. And next we have Blair Swift, but she's not here. Of course, we, we do have 12 girls on the team, but unfortunately, this is the group that could be here this evening. So we might be missing a few, but they are of course appreciated and, um, and celebrated. That's right, in our hearts, good. Okay, and we've got, and she's not here either. Ms. Caroline Konecki, I'll say, she's not here. Devin Veach is not here as well. Lizzie AVI Overfelt, as well, not here. We've got Ella Bastidas. Yay! Alright, and then we've got Amelia Kirin, Emmy, as we know her. And then next we have Indiana Miles. We did that on purpose. Just kidding. Next we have Jeannie Reese. And of course Lauren Soderquist. You're welcome. Let's see. I think we, we've got one more, I think. We got them all? Yep, I think that's it. We got them all. Of course, my name is Jennifer Miles, I was the assistant coach. And we've got Tony right here was also assistant coach. And then our head coach was Coach Joe. And we're very proud, thank you.
Next up, we have the 12 U boys and Coach Jeremy Payne. Hello, everyone. We are back. For the third year in a row, I'm really proud of these guys. It was an absolute pleasure to coach them. Extremely easy to work with. We had lots of fun, every practice, every game, but we took care of business. Most importantly, we beat our friends in Nash County in the championship. And it was a great game, hard fought. They beat us in pool play, but we came back and took care of them. Beat two undefeated teams en route to winning the championship. So I'm very proud of them. And thank you to Kevin and Ryan, my assistants. I appreciate all your help. Without further ado, let's get it on. Devin. Come on over. Preston. Kayden Payne. Matthew Hannigan. Brian Young. Niall Tuku. Benjamin Dornan. Ryan James. Ashok Brahmayar. Sebastian Buckler. Check out that headband. Kayden Chalfant. Noah Clark. And the rest are for the coaches. Quick, let's give a quick shout out. For YouTube action, Ethan Grissette and Aiden Morse could not make it tonight, but they are a huge part of the team. We appreciate them. Thank you all.
We'll wait for a second. Our turn. And then remind me to give you, give you what's in the sack. Alright. Tonight, we recognize the Holly Springs School of Dance and Director Marilyn Chapel, who I've known for a few years, for their sixth appearance in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. I hope you all saw it, because I did, it was great. And Marilyn tells me her first school's appearance was iconic parade in 2002. You were what, 12?
Yes.
Okay. And she has a group that goes every three years. These talented young ladies were part of the Spirit of America Dance Stars, stars, remember that word for a minute, an organization that gathers dancers from throughout the country to come together and perform in the parade. This was a little cooler this year, right? As I recall. So Marilyn, would you tell us a little bit about your exciting trip? Please.
Thank you Mayor Sears. We had an amazing trip and for the, for the sixth time, we went on this incredible adventure. And I had the great privilege of going with 45 of our talented dancers. And we got to do great sightseeing, we got to see a wonderful Broadway show. And then of course, we got to do the incredible thing, which was to walk along the parade route and then perform at Herald Square. And there's really, we have a million memories and all of them wonderful. And we did say the hardest part was coming home, because it was just such a fantastic trip. But I, we are so appreciative of everyone's love and support. It really took a team effort to make all of this come together. And as I was standing with the girls back there, I said, what an incredible thing to live in a small town that wants to recognize you and celebrate you. Because if you lived in a larger town, they'd be like, great, we're so glad you went. But it's the, it's living in a town like this that loves their children so much and celebrates our youth so much that makes us so appreciative and makes it that much sweeter. So thank you to everyone for all of your support, we really appreciate it. And great job dancers.
I remind myself of a, a theme I've said before. If it's good for the kids, it's good for Holly Springs. Is this not one example of that for sure? Right? Now, I'd like to present each dancer, or I may or may not do that. As tiny gift to commemorate their appearance as shining stars in the Macy's Day Thanksgiving Day Parade. Thank you for representing our town, we appreciate your hard work. And as I say, I watched the parade, I froze just watching it, but you guys were great. I mean absolutely wonderful. So to remember this wonderful day, the town has, has limited no expense, no expense. And Marilyn, I'm going to ask you to help me. I'll walk by you and you can present them with this wonderful gift. It's a star. What a surprise, right? Pictures! Wow. Thank you! We ready? Certainly not last. But you are last, but you're not least. 2018 Central League USTA Champions. And there will be some discussion now, and who would like to say a few words? You would, wouldn't you? I would like you to do that. So please introduce yourself and we'll get to you in just a second. You're on. This is the spokesperson.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Kane and I represent our USTA 2.5 Singles State Champions. First of all, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, we just want to thank you all for the town of Holly Springs for providing for us and maintaining Ting Park. That is the tennis courts that we play on, that this has made an amazing opportunity for us to find a brand new passion for tennis. We've made some lifelong friends and as an added bonus, we found out that we're kind of good at this. Most of us started playing in February of this year. We started a singles team, played 10 matches and won nine of those. And then after that, we were invited to the state championship in Goldsboro. So next year, we plan on going even bigger. Again, thank you Holly Springs for providing us this beautiful facility where we can play and perfect our game. These are my teammates.
I think we have something else here. What is it? Oh, here it is. Aha. If you would like to... Hello Captain. I knew you'd be here somewhere. As I said, the captain was coming. If you would read their names, I'll shake their hands and we'll take pictures and sort of the top.
First one is Abby. Ms. Becky Briggs. Kimberly Hilt. Megan Ryder. Sabrina. Tiffany Easley. And our last two that were not able to join us tonight, Casey Barcliffe and Rebecca Pedersen.
And you, Jan, like our...
I have pictures.
Do you want to?
Oh sure. It doesn't matter. I'm very humble. Did you get everybody?
Wait, wait, wait.
Hang on. The certificates, that's right.
We are, sorry we're high makers.
I'm here, never mind. Thank you ladies, good job.
...statements and I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit my, um, my, my comments really to the general fund and to just some items that, that might be noteworthy in the financial statements. So i- if you're looking on page 24, you have your statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund. Also, your other major funds are included in there, but for the general fund itself, revenues for fiscal year ended June 30, 2018 were about 3.1, or I'm sorry, 38.1 million, and that exceeded budget by about 1.6 million. So that's, that's good in terms of your, uh, your, your performance compared to budget on the general fund. Uh, and it exceeded the prior year by about 2.9 million or about 8% increase over the, the prior year. So combining that with, on the expenditure side within the general fund, expenditures of about 35.6 million exceeded the prior year by about 4 million, 4.1 million, but were below budget by about 3.4 million. So a, a, a good growth in revenues, control on expenditures, that ended up with you having revenues exceeding expenditures for the fiscal year by about 2.6 million. And then after accounting for some transfers between funds, your general fund fund balance increased by about 1.7, 1.8 million dollars. So a, a, a relatively healthy-looking performance and increase in your fund balance. As far as the fund balance itself, just taking a look at, uh, an emphasis on your unassigned, so your available fund balance and kinda what that looks like. So if you look at it in terms of relative to your, your monthly expenditures, expenditures for the fiscal year, you'll note were about 35.5, 35.6 million. On a monthly basis, that comes out to just under about $3 million, about 2.9 per month. So if you look at your unassigned fund balance, in other words, your most available fund balance at about 7.5 million dollars, that works out to, if you were looking at a reserve in months, about 2.5, a little over 2.5 months. Now, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Association, Officers' Association, they have a recommendation of, of anywhere from two to six months in, in monthly fund balance reserve. So you're within that. There's, there's other, uh, the, the G, or the LGC actually is, is a, a little less conservative on that, and they really look for a, a fund balance of about 8% of those total expenditures for the fiscal year. So at 7.5 million, y'all would be well within their recommended reserve for, for fund balance, for general fund, fund balance as far as the unassigned. The, the other major operations, as y'all know, is your water and sewer fund, and just some quick notes on those. Overall, total revenues for the water and sewer increased by about a little over 8%. Uh, and that's compared to your expended, your expenses being controlled, total expenses only increased by a little over 1%. So you ended up with a, a change in net position of about 12.6 million dollars, and that's a, that's a, a growth in, in, as far as the increase in net or change in net position of about, uh, it's an increase from about 2 point, of about 2.3 million. You had about 10.2 million in change in, in net assets in the prior year. So just a couple of highlights there in terms of the, the main operations of, of the town. One other noteworthy item, y'all did implement, like other, all other local governments, you implemented Gatsby 75. That's accounting for the liability associated with your, uh, your retiree healthcare. And so that, that resulted in, and again, this is across the board, all, all, uh, local governments that offer their employees that type of benefit, uh, more than likely experienced, based on an actuarial valuation, experienced an increase in that liability. So y'all's liability for that is, uh, at over three, a little over 3 million, uh, and I think that ended up decreasing your, your net position by about a little over a million, 1.1 million. So about a million dollars so addition to your liability compared to how that liability was accounted for under the old Gatsby system. So again, y'all are, uh, in, in the same company as other local governments who also had to adopt that same, uh, that same standard. Any, any questions on, on the, the comments as far as the, the numbers?
Any questions or comments so far?
No.
Doing good.
Um, just wanted to cover a few things. This is, uh, this would fall under our, our required communications under the audit standards with y'all as the governing board. So just cover a few things quickly. So in terms of performing the, the audit process, we do, uh, do substantial planning before we come in and meet with Mary and her team and start to ask them for items. Uh, so we do our homework. We wanna make sure that we have as, as good an understanding of the town and its operations with the information available before we start the process. So planning is a big, big part of the audit process. We do employ a, a, a materiality threshold. So our main objective is to provide an opinion as to whether the town's financial statements are fairly presented, uh, in all material respects, in accordance with what's called general accounting principles. So, uh, that opinion is important to the primary users of the financial statements, which are mostly gonna be, uh, rating agencies and folks who wanna to, uh, measure the credit worthiness of the town. So really, the, the main audience for what y'all are having us do is those rating agencies, bondholders, so that they can assess the, the credit worthiness. We do rely heavily on internal controls. So we evaluate the town's internal controls, those key controls over, uh, financial reporting. That's really what we're interested in. And if we see areas where controls aren't as strong as in other areas, that, uh, that adjusts our audit risk, and we tend to do more work in those areas. So if we have a, a particular line item within the financial statements where we feel like controls aren't as good, then we're required under the standards to do more work in that area to make sure we don't have a material misstatement in that balance or that activity. So as I mentioned, our responsibility is to, to provide you with our opinion as to whether the financial statements are fairly stated. I'll tell you that we did have an unmodified opinion, uh, on the, the presentation of the financial statements, and that means that based on the work that we performed, uh, it's our opinion that the financial statements are fairly stated. That's where you wanna be. That's the equivalent of a clean opinion as far as the financial statements are concerned. We, we evaluate not just the numbers, but also your accounting policies. We wanna make sure that they're consistent with GAAP and with the, the promulgations of the Government Accounting Standards Board. We also audit the disclosures. So all those footnotes that are behind the basic financial statements and really support those, uh, that's part of our audit process to make the, sure that those are also materially At the end of the audit process, we, we do ask management to sign a representation letter, just getting their, their commitment in writing as to certain assertions regarding the financial statements and your, your, um, your processes and procedures over, uh, financial reporting. We had no disagreements with management. If we had a, a severe disagreement to where we couldn't come to an accord as to how a certain item should be treated, we would be required to come to y'all as the governing board and, and resolve that. So we had nothing of, of that, of that kind. We had no significant issues that we, that we had to discuss with management, other than what would we, we would consider normal, uh, discussion in terms of executing the audit process. No difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We received information, as I mentioned before, in a timely manner. It was fluid, and it was materially accurate, and those are the two main things that, that we look for. So I, I alluded to the, uh, the, the opinion in the financial statements. That's at page six of the report, and, uh, and as I mentioned before, our responsibility there is to issue that opinion as to materiality and, uh, or conformity with, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. We're, we're wanting to, the standards require that we, we obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that the, the, uh, the financial statements are materially accurate. So we're not performing a fraud audit. Uh, what we're, what we're doing again, our objective is to make sure that for the users of those financial statements, that they feel like they can rely on the fact that there are no material errors in those financials for purposes of making credit decisions. Management's responsibility is to prepare the, the financial statements and to present them in accordance with GAAP or those generally accepted accounting principles, and to maintain a, a sufficient internal control network, so have good internal controls over financial reporting. And as, as I mentioned, we did issue an unmodified opinion, and that's where you wanna be. Now, because the, uh, the town is a local government, you're subject to government auditing standards, so we did also, we're required to issue what's called a yellow book report, and this is at page 122. And what we're looking at there, I mentioned internal controls. When we're evaluating the internal controls, we're not auditing them, but we are looking at them in terms of strength and weaknesses. And really, the only reason we're doing that, the main reason we're doing that, is to determine our audit approach. So if, uh, if we feel like there are weaknesses in terms of how bank reconciliations are performed, we did not note that. But if we did, then we would, uh, we would be required to do more work in making sure that that cash balance is complete, uh, that it's accurate. Now, if it were a situation where those controls are strong, then we can rely on those controls. We test them, but we're, we're able to do less substantive testing because you've got a good network in place to make sure, uh, that material misstatements would be prevented or detected because your internal controls are good in that area. So it's really about a risk assessment. Now, if we, uh, if we, uh, identify certain findings in the course of that risk assessment, government auditing standards require that we report those to you. Now, this was our, uh, our first year, as y'all know, with, with y'all, so, uh, we really, we, we give it a hard look every year, no matter how many years we've worked with a client. But definitely that first year, the risk is a little bit higher. So, uh, we, we were very stringent in looking at internal controls. From the get-go, from our first meeting with, with Mary and with the finance team, their comment to us was, "We want you, as a new set of eyes, to, to look at what we're doing and to give us recommendations, to give us findings if there are areas, uh, that we need to improve on." And we did, we did take, take them up on that. We know that's expected of us to, uh, to, to help out and to provide recommendations. I've got a few of those that we'll, we'll get to in just a minute, uh, but just wanted to point that out, that in terms of looking at the internal controls, uh, that, uh, that reporting process or that reporting of, of areas where we think there could be improvement, that's part of the, the audit. And the, the other two reports that we, we issue, we do a single or a separate audit. It's called a single audit. We do this on both the state and federal level. Uh, the, the town, as y'all know, benefits or, or leverages the benefit of both state and federal grants, uh, to use those funds for all the growth that y'all have and for, for, uh, other, um, other areas to where the, the, the town is achieving its mission. And so those are excellent funding sources. They do come with a lot of strings attached in terms of, uh, some very detailed compliance requirements. So, um, the, the uniform guidance in the North Carolina State Single Audit Act require that we perform a separate audit on your major programs to determine whether you're materially in compliance with all those requirements and strings that they attach to, uh, those programs. So, uh, the good news there is, in testing your major programs, uh, we were able to give an opinion that you're materially in compliance with those requirements. That's a good thing. Uh, if there was material non-compliance, that could result in, in a liability to the town of having to stroke a check back for grant funds that were received. So that's, that's good news. And then finally, we, we had, uh, three areas where we made internal control recommendations, and these are, these are, uh, as I mentioned before, this is something that your, your finance team was very upfront about to, to let us know areas where there could be improvement. Uh, in all, in all candor, I think for, uh, a first-time audit, um, we usually find more items than this. So I think y'all did well in that there were, there were fairly limited findings, um, and these resolved, revolved around fairly simple fix areas. I think that based on conversations with your finance team before we even got out of the field, they were thinking about how they were gonna remedy those. Uh, and so what we're obligated to do for the next audit is to follow up on those items, and we'll do that and then be reporting to you at this time next year, uh, the extent to where those were remedied. But based on our experience with y'all so far, we feel like the, uh, the acceptance of these items and the inclination to get those remedied is, is exactly what we're looking for, uh, in terms of a sense of urgency and, and wanting to make sure that those areas are corrected. So with accounts payable, uh, we noted a, a few items that, that were, um, that remained unrecorded, uh, at, at the end of the year. Those were corrected by the finance team, and those are back where they want, they're, they need to be. So we're just recommending that in future years, um, controls be strengthened to make sure that those, those items are identified during the closing process, and I think, I think your team is gonna be very capable of doing that. Entries to fund balance, uh, normally what we wanna be able to do is, uh, as opposed to proposing adjustments, which we have to do sometimes, but we always wanna limit the extent that we propose adjustments, and rather, the finance team is making the adjustments, and then we're turning around and critiquing them and auditing them. So we add a few adjustments to fund balance, just to clean up beginning fund balance, uh, and those were, uh, we, we pointed those out. Those were executed by your finance team, uh, and we're very comfortable that those were, those were addressed. Bank accounts, we wanna make sure that any bank account that's opened in the town's name is, the, the activity is reflected on the general ledger. Um, this, this is a, a bank account that, uh, the, the finance team was aware of, they were monitoring it, but we simply wanna make sure that it's also recorded on the general ledger. Again, another easy fix, but just an item that, uh, we wanted to report in this initial year. So, uh, again, I think for, definitely for a, for a first-year audit, and I've been doing this a long time, uh, your finance team performed very well. Again, we held them to a lot of scrutiny. Uh, it's our job to continue to be vigilant with that, to change our audit approach, uh, and we, we know that's what y'all expect of us, to where we've got a certain extent of uncertainty when we come in, uh, and I think that helps strengthen controls, it helps build, uh, and, and really substantiate the, the work that your finance team is doing. Mr. Mayor, I can certainly take any questions that you and the council members may have.
Any questions or comments of Mr. Davis Weiss here? Looking good?
Yep.
Think we're all set?
Thank you.
Appreciate you today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I can just make one comment?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I do wanna thank Elliott Davis Audit Firm for their hard work, and, and in particular, I wanna thank Mary Hogan and Tina Strapp, who's also in the audience, and the finance team for their hard work on the comprehensive annual financial report, uh, the year-end closeout, and all the audit work. I think they'll, um, attest that it's one of the toughest annual projects that they work on each year, and I just wanna thank the group for their hard work.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Gen 9, 8A, the consent agenda, Mayor Protem.
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
We need a motion to accept that audit. We gotta go back.
Uh-oh.
I think we missed that.
Is it on?
Yeah, it was on this.
Yeah, go back one.
Well, there it is, I'm sorry.
Motion to accept the annual audit report and management letter for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Gen 9A, new business, 2018 town code amendments. Gina Clapp, you're already there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is a rather, actually, quick town code amendment that we have to present to you this evening. We were working on a couple of things and saw that in the town code, there was some, what we will call ancient home occupation regulations still in the town code that were replaced when the Unified Development Ordinance was adopted in 2002. So we decided to take a read, and we found a few other things that we thought we would do a quick update to, and so I'll walk you through some of these updates and explain what they are. So going through the proposed ordinance, part one, um, when the Unified Development Ordinance was adopted in 2002, it was adopted as Appendix A to the town code. It is not referenced at all in the town code, so we are proposing to add to the table of contents, um, to add it as Appendix A, so it is officially connected to the town code. Part two is regarding the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The town code has in there that we can extend our limit, our ETJ limits up to one mile. That is only for communities that are less than 10,000 in population. Once you reach 10,000, you can do two miles. Once you reach 25,000, you can do three miles. So we're just recommending to eliminate any specifics and just reference the general statute codes into what our allowances are for extraterritorial jurisdiction. Part three was that home occupation section, and so we do regulate home occupations, and we monitor and we update that section each year when we do our annual evaluations of the Unified Development Ordinance. So this was old regulation, and so this is going to be removing the specifics from the town code, but refer, having a reference in the town code that home occupations are regulated in Appendix A of the town code. Part four is in regards to code enforcement, and there is a paragraph in there that if the, um, building department does not enforce a zoning ordinance, what to do? Well, we do enforce a zoning ordinance, so we can eliminate that language. The next part on here is in regards to appeals to building code inspector determinations. So if for whatever reason somebody wants to appeal a determination of one of our building code inspectors, those appeals actually come to you, the town council, not to the Board of Adjustment. The following part six is in regards to abandoned junk and nuisance vehicles. These are actually, um, enforced, regulations enforced by building code enforcement, not the zoning enforcement inspector. Um, so we're doing a couple multiple departmental cleanups here. So currently, the town code says that Public Works will tow any vehicles. Our building code department actually, um, coordinates with our police department for towing of any vehicles if that is necessary. It's not done very often. And then the final amendment is in regards to developer agreements, and it has the Department of Planning and Zoning as the department responsible for all maintenance and annual inspections regarding anything with a developer agreement, but there's actually multiple departments that, um, participate in developer agreements. So removing the Planning and Zoning Department is the only responsible department for, um, the enforcement of developer agreements.
Questions or comments of Gina? Everybody's looking good?
Yep.
We're looking good. Let's go for a motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 18-14 to amend the town of Holly Springs Town Code.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing nationally. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to item 10, other business. I gotta say crosswalk safety like I do every week, and I think we're making progress. Those lights, thanks again, Kendra. Love those lights when they come on, 'cause everybody is stopping on those, except, well, never mind. Secondly, I wanna ask the scouts here, who's been very patient for this whole meeting. Hi, scouts.
Hi.
How many of you are looking to be an eagle?
Me.
That's good. And what I was gonna tell you is, if I can do it, and the town manager can do it, so can you, okay? And thank you for being patient, and thank you for your comments earlier. Lastly, on Friday of this week, there will be a Christmas tree lighting at the Cultural Arts Center, okay? If you guys can come, please do. It'll be at 8 o'clock. Santa will be there, and it will be a new Christmas tree that we've never had before, so you will like it. It's about 800 feet tall, is that right? Not quite? Okay, not quite. And then, on the Christmas parade the next day, or the, the, the deal is this. The council and the ten, and the town manager and I, and our wives in some cases, will be on, the first time, the Holly Trolley. You will see what looks like a trolley car with rubber wheels, and it will be Station 10, I believe. Am I right, Linda? Station 10? 10 or 11, yeah, whatever. And then behind that will be the youth advisory board, and they will be on a flatbed truck, and let's hope it doesn't rain. Snow a little bit, okay. But anyway, it's a fun thing to do. Come, it starts at 11 o'clock. Be there, be square, okay? And I think that's about all I've got. Other business? Council?
Yep, good, good.
I'd like to wish our residents who are celebrating the Eight Days of Light happy Hanukkah. I know that that started on Sunday, and I have some friends who are, um, going through this, this special time of year for the Jewish religion, so happy Hanukkah to everyone.
Uh, just two things. Uh, just wanted to congratulate Sergeant Ricky Leach, who just retired this, uh, past Friday after 25 years of service, uh, as a police officer. And then, second, um, we've had a, a late fall with the leaves that have been falling and with the rain. Um, I ask residents, be patient. Our Department of Public Works is out there doing their best to clean up all the leaves, so just be patient. Uh, no, I've gotten some email requests, uh, you know, when we're gonna come by. None of the trucks are broke, it's just that, uh, we're, uh, playing catch-up with, uh, all the leaves that have, starting to fall right now, so.
Yep, yep.
That's all I have.
Be good, thank you. Who else? All good? Okay, thank you. Item 11 is the manager's report. Eagle Scout, ran, well, never mind.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, I have two items tonight, Mayor and Council. The, the first item, just a reminder that we have the business appreciation reception this Thursday evening at the Holly Springs Cultural Center. Uh, that runs from 5:30 until 7:30, and I know many of you are planning to attend and many in the community, but it's a great opportunity for us to thank and recognize and show our appreciation to the business community who, um, really helps really make this a special community, so Thursday evening. The, the second item, and I'll say a couple introductory words, and as I'm saying this, I'll invite, uh, Chief Smith to come forward. We've had a little bit of conversation, uh, with you about a recent House bill that was introduced, House Bill 1110, um, and it's a bill related to the 1010 Fire District governing, governance model. You may recall that in Wake County, what, there's what's called a unified, um, fire tax, and that unified fire tax, um, is a tax in the unincorporated areas, and it provides funding for adequate, equal fire protection across the county. In Wake County, it used to be, prior to the mid-1990s, there were about 20 different fire, uh, district taxes. And at that time, the, the Wake County Board of County Commissioners approved a plan to consolidate all those into one, um, unified approach, and really the goals behind that were to have a more consistent, adequate, um, and equalized funding of, for adequate fire protection across the, across the county. So this particular bill would carve out one particular district to be separate from that unified plan, um, and we passed along some information to you expressing some thoughts and some concerns about that. And so I wanted just to provide you a couple additional details about that, and I've asked Chief Smith if he would, uh, just say a couple comments about what that means for us in terms of what that service looks like, and they are adjacent to us, and we have some, um, I guess you could say mutual aid-type response arrangements, and so he's just gonna say a few comments about that.
So the 1010 Rural Fire District is on 1010 Road. It consists of two fire stations. Um, the fire station at the intersection of Holly Springs and 1010 Road is the one that would affect us the most. So the, the bill just came to fruition into light for us on Friday, so I've only had a little bit of time to kinda put together what some of the effects would be. Uh, the most immediate effect would probably be funding. As you know, we contract with Wake County to provide fire protection and first responder services to parts of the rural Wake County that are in our first due district. Unfortunately, the state has not redrawn the fire tax district lines, um, prior to Station One being built. So the fire tax district in, inside some pockets of Holly Springs and on Sunset Lake Road, there's still area in what they consider Wake County rural area that's in Fairview Fire District, or 1010 Rural Fire District. So there's a possibility of funding that would be collected for the 1010 Fire District from areas that are sort of, I'll give you an example, the houses on Holly Springs Road, that there's a pocket of homes right there near Middlecrest, between Middlecrest and Cobble Point, that are still in Wake County. So that tax money, the fire tax money, would go to the 1010 Fire District. Um, the other thing is that the estimated revenue for the 1010 Fire District's about 2.1, and if I, 2.1 million, and I believe their budget is like 1.6 million, so they would actually get about $400,000 more of Wake County tax money, and that would take away from fire protection from some of the poorer, um, more rural areas that, um, don't have the tax base. The long-term effects of this could be operational, where we have automatic aid with all the departments around us, so if, if we get a fire call, a company gets automatically dispatched. Um, that could go to a mutual aid, like we have with Cary. So if we needed a truck from Cary, we would call Cary, call dispatch and ask them to send a truck from Cary. They would have to clear it with Cary supervisors, and then they would send the truck to us. So there could be a little bit of a delay there. And then depending on how the Fairview Rural Fire District manages this, um, there's some areas like Sunset Oaks, um, could be affected, because if we were on another call and our two trucks from Station One were committed, they would be the first in company at Sunset Oaks. So there could be a little bit of a longer response time, but all of that is sort of speculative on however, how this bill goes. The last, other last, long-term effect would be, um, other rural nonprofit fire districts following suit, um, like Bay Leaf or somewhere like that. suit, like Bay Leaf or somewhere like that, where they have a larger tax base. If they, they pass this bill, I would think others would probably follow suit. And it would really set the Wake County back probably about 20 years. Do you have any questions? I don't want to steal the town manager's thunder, but I figure since I have the mic, I would like to pass along a couple other things. It's the holiday season now, so a lot of people have live Christmas trees. So I'd like to implore the residents that have live Christmas trees to ensure that they stay watered. Dry Christmas trees are an extreme fire hazard. They start from electrical lights or close to heating sources. So if they could please take care with that, be careful if you're hanging Christmas lights, not, not to fall. And don't, you know, candles, the three biggest holidays for fire with candles is Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. So just take some caution with candles. If you have issues with the smoke alarms, you can contact our department at 919-856-SAFE. I think that's the number. I don't remember it right off the top of my head. We will come out and check your smoke alarms and assist you with checking them and replace batteries if you need them. And it's really, don't want any family to go through a tragedy or have a fire during this holiday season. So Mr. Harrington, I figured I'd take a little bit of minute in the spotlight and put some fire safety stuff out there. So thank you all.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
The only other thing that I would add, Mayor and council, back on the, on the House bill 1110, I have been in contact with the town managers of Apex and Fuquay Varina in terms of just trying to coordinate and understand. They feel similar, similarly, and they have started to engage. My sense, the, the delegation, my sense is that this issue could move relatively quickly because the General Assembly is in special session. And they'll want to wrap up a number of items here before this particular group goes out and the new one comes in here in the new year. So I'm happy, if directed by the council, happy to do any particular reach out on that or if any other council members or mayor, if that's the wish of the council, I'm happy to do that.
With a little bit of help, I, I would appreciate being a part of this. And I would reach out to all the mayors. I can do that pretty quickly. And I think, from what I hear on how this bill was passed and a few other things, I'd like to play. How about the council?
So town manager, are you suggesting do we put a letter that we put our names to and send out? Or do we individually, you want us to read? Like how, what's the best action, given that they are in session right now and it's moving quickly?
Right. I think at this particular point, I think phone calls would be, would be very effective. The, the council can certainly, we can quickly draft a letter and, and have council sign that tomorrow and, and send. I think that could be easy to do and certainly sends a, a collective message. And, and/or the phone calls. I think the council would go either way, and I'm comfortable with either way that the council might choose.
That or just go down to legislative?
Which I have no problem doing.
Do that too.
Yep.
And it's, it's a bad bill, as you all know.
Yeah, I think it was presented on Monday. And it'll probably be about a week before they vote on that. So now's the time to act, to let them know, you know, what our position is on that. So, okay.
It'll get viewed by a couple committees. It's been already viewed by one. I think it goes to the Finance Committee next.
Yep. Okay.
Anything else on that subject? Good? We'll try to help. It's bad. Anything else?
No, that's it tonight.
Okay. Counselor?
Yes, here's a need for a small closed session to update you on a potential litigation matter involving a greenway easement in the Holly Glen subdivision and property owned by Mr. and Mrs. Cornball. So if somebody would like to make a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute
Make a motion to go into closed session and pursuant to that statute.
Second.
What's been made in second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you all for sticking with us. Early Mary.